I don't see any fees.
Okay, I've got noon and we will get started here. We have two public hearings today, which we will go through in order before we get to the actual meeting. So the very first one would be the public hearing on the update of the subdivision regulations. And we will open that now at 12 o'clock. And do we have anybody sign up to speak? Have we signed?
Oh, we've signed it.
For the subdivision.
This is just a signing sheet with presents.
Oh.
We will open it up for discussion.
Okay, well, we're doing proud, so. Public hearing will be opened now for the subdivision regulations if anybody would like to speak. We'll just take up the minutes each. And please step up and state your name and we'll open it up.
I'm David Woolley, assistant speaker here now. I certainly don't claim to be any kind of expert on subdivisions. And I would not pretend to say what a good subdivision is or what it or isn't or how one should be built. That's your guys' responsibility and certainly house builders that know how to do that. What I came today to speak to was our critical shortage of housing in Alma. We face it all the time as we add staff and people can't have a difficult time finding housing because none are being built. I think we all are completely aware of that being true. You know, one builder has told me in more than one conversation that part of the reason is that they can build the same house in Fort Smith versus building it in Alma and just because of the differences in the market, they can sell it for more over there than they can sell it for here. So I think it's important that we not do anything that makes it more difficult for someone to develop a subdivision or to build houses. It's already a challenge, it appears to me, to build houses, to build a subdivision in Alma because it is more profitable for builders to build in Fort Smith. So I would hope that we would do anything and everything we can to entice house construction to happen in Alma. I don't know whether, with that said, I'm not in a position to judge this proposal. I don't know whether it's a good proposal, whether it does what I'm alluding to or not. That's for you to decide. I would just encourage you to very carefully think about, does this proposal do anything that would make it more difficult for builders to build in Alma? If it does, then I would encourage you to give careful consideration to, do we really need that in the proposal? Because I think we would all agree, we certainly do need houses and we certainly don't need to do anything that would make it more difficult for builders to do something. So I just encourage you to look at it very carefully and not enact anything that would make it harder on builders to do the thing, the very thing that we need, which is more houses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add to what David was talking about. First, I'd like to give you all a handout, what's really going on down there for growth? It may surprise you. Four people per year for the last three years? I'm like David, we don't need to do anything that would prohibit growth. And you know, without this subdivision, we're not going to have any more growth. I can tell you that. In what is, what is development cost roughly up to now per lot of new development?
I couldn't begin to tell you, it changes daily. We're in such a volatile market right now, there's no way to pre-price anything at this moment.
I've been told this, maybe as much as 30 grand per lot, this development cost, close to it?
That's a problem.
Now, you take the development cost, you take the whole time, Jacob, how long is it going to take? How can you make money like that? You're going to have to price these lots 50 grand or more. Because holy time, well, the last subdivision built here, I believe, is in country medicine state, 2007. Do you realize that that thing's been there 13 years? Still got four or five lots left? Wow, and that's a little bit of subdivision. Wow. So I don't, I just, we don't need to do anything, I'm just going to prohibit growth. Aaron, you know that. I mean, Lloyd, you've been in developments and development cost has just gotten unbelievably high. I've been, I've been a developer myself, I know this stuff, you know. But nothing like it is today. And you know, on this property owner association, my, do we need a property owner association in Alma? You can look what I gave you there, 5,800 people in the city here now, 5,400 10 years ago. The last three years, only four people per year. Wow, that's something that's scary, very scary. We were having absolutely no growth in the city of Alma. And we don't need to add to it by coming up with something like a property owner association that would just cost prospective buyers how much more a year, Emmett? Two, three, $400 a year probably, if you're on a property owner association, but if we own this stuff, you know. But what's it going to cost the developer? And wow, what about a bond? I mean, gosh, I can't believe this, a bond that runs from now on? Let me tell you what, guys. Aaron, you know this. Jacob, you know this. There will be no, absolutely no new developments in Alma if we add to this thing like that. Would you say so, David? I mean, I'm a businessman and I like to see growth. And we're getting a lot of growth here now, but it's not in Alma. I mean, I have people, I'm pulled up from my facility down here. But you know what they're doing? They're coming in here and they're locating outside the city limits. And that's a shame because there's just nothing about up here. And it's not going to be, it's not going to be if we add more restrictions to this thing. First of all, why do we need a property owner association? And who came up with this anyway? Who came up with this idea of a property owner association? I mean, why do we need it at this point in Alma, Jacob?
It was, it's a criminal alarm, just a recommendation of the city to, for ongoing maintenance.
See, we're a little town, only 5,800 population. And you get up north of Arkansas, where you got big and major developments, they've got playgrounds, they've got recreation areas and everything like that. It's different up there. You need somebody that's going to be responsible for taking care of it. But Alma, that's not the case. All we got, the streets running in and out. That's it. But I just hate to see us come up with something here that's going to prohibit growth. And David, let me tell you something, brother, you know this has hurt school system too on growth. We should have had a lot of growth. Four of the five highest growth towns in the state of Arkansas right now are all out of North West Arkansas. Bentonville, number one, Rogers, number two, Fayetteville, number three, even Springville, and that's not really a good place, number five. And I've got probably Springs, I know all about it. But here, we're just, we don't, we're not going to have the growth unless we get real. We need to be making these regulations less restrictive instead of more restrictive. We really do. You know, we need to get off, we need to, we need to add to our our policy regulations with the subdivision. We need to add in here developments without curbing government, estate size lots. Fort Smith's got it. Here we're sitting here in Alma, we don't have it. Why don't, why don't we do things like that to encourage growth? I mean, instead of stuff like this, it's just going to kill growth. I mean, it really is. But what do y'all think about that, about that growth situation here in Alma? Have y'all had a chance to look at it? Isn't that a little surprising? Four people per year for the last three years? Bad, bad. So I'm pro-Alma all the way. I'm a businessman. And I've been, I've been in estate business, I've been in development, I've been in building business, I've been in all places. And there's no reason we should handicap builders and realtors and developers and stuff like this when it's, when it's not needed at this point in Alma. What are you going to say, Jacob? You're developing.
I'll say my opinions when we get to that in the meeting. But I appreciate you coming and anything, any other specific things you want to hit on or is that pretty well covered?
Well, I would like to say drop this, I know it's called private infrastructure maintenance, but it's a POA, that's all it is. Property owner association right in there. I'd like to see this thing dropped out here because it just adds too much money to everything. To the buyers, to the builders, to the developers, everybody. And it's not needed, it's absolutely, was this ideal because the city doesn't want to maintain the street right away into the, into the development? Is that what, is that what this is all about? Give me a break. This is not like, this is not like playgrounds and recreation areas like to have in North West Arkansas on big developments. That's the main thing I would like to see you guys just do away with. I'm surprised it got this far. I didn't know this was going on until I've been told by a couple of people about it, you know. And on this, on this flood thing here. Is that going, what I said here, that's going to be mandatory for any developer. Now, what if it's, what if it's on up there in North of Emmett State, 40 hours, all high ground? Do we need that? I don't, I don't think so. We're just trying to handicap ourselves too much. And I know, David, you know that you're a post-school all the way and you love to see growth and I don't know, but you tell me, without the open policy, would Alma schools have much growth at all in the last few years?
It's an issue.
You're referring to school choice.
Do what now?
School choice is what.
Yeah.
From out of the district coming in.
Okay. Okay, guys, that's all I've got to say. I appreciate you guys serving on board. You've got a real good mix, literally different hat probably. You've got builders, developers, business people, you've got it all. And Jason Parker's nice, nice man, just met him the other day. And so, you know, you guys are the kind of people leading on this planning commission. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I want to add stuff earlier, but I just, I appreciate everybody and what they're doing here and what you're trying to accomplish. In City of Alma, that's what I've noticed since we've been here is we went through some, when we did, you know, we had, we had lots of growth, young families coming and stuff. Back when, when your husband was on board, I presented a deal for zero lot lines at that time. And he had asked me, he said, what are you planning on doing that? And I said, well, no, I just think it's something that Alma needs. Going back in history, I grew up in Marion, Arkansas. Marion came in with these small zero lot lines, and I think you said you're doing some of that.
Doing some.
I think, I think things like that are really to be focused on. How can we build some, some entry level homes for young families? You know, that most of our, our kids that are graduates who want to work at, you know, at Tyson's or wherever, they're starting their families up and they need, they need a place they can afford to get into. It certainly don't need a homeowner association, if you will, and extra things. I'm treasurer of a homeowner association in Gulf Shores, Alabama, but we haven't, and truthfully, it doesn't do anything. We, we have those owners, you know, these are almost million dollar homes that won't bother your yard. And you send them fines, they don't care. And I've been, I have another, oh, we'll see. I think it's two more that I've been in that. These people, they're either going to do that or they're not going to do it. You accomplish nothing with that in Alma. Because they say, well, when I sell my home, they just pay the fine off at that point. They're closing, so then if you're trying to accomplish mowing grass and these types of things, I would assume that's a language. I do think that Alma has got a lot of, a lot of great things to offer. I mean, our school's amazing. I'm just willing to, they work for South Tibet and make that as great as they can. We're still, everything's sitting right there, we just need to make it happen, if that makes sense. And so how do we make that happen? And I don't think it's by making it harder is, is much, quite the point of that. So with that, I'm basically, all I'm saying is, I agree with what I'm hearing. I don't see a homeowner association helping that matter at all. Increase the older costs. There's no way you could do those zero lot lines and keep it, I mean, if we could do $100,000 houses right now on a zero lot line, how many do you think we could sell?
Could every one of them?
I mean, literally.
You could build anything that inexpensive.
But I'm talking about 900 to 1,200 square foot home, star homes. I think you would have an influx of young families coming. And you wouldn't need to put restraints on those types of subdivisions. I assume that would follow in with the proposal which y'all were talking about.
Yeah, I think subdivision.
Exactly. And so if your dad thought it was a great idea to play like this, like that's a great idea and I can't believe you're not doing it. I'm like, no, I'm just saying in the future, I see this as something that we need or will need to. We don't have the appraisals and I don't understand that. Have you guys ever talked with the state, the head of appraisals? Who oversees the appraisers? That's what I want to know. In the state of Arkansas. They're licensed through somebody.
Little rock heads and board.
Okay, so why can we be 15 minutes from FAMIR or 10, whatever it is, and their appraisal value is so much higher? Who governs and who gives the authority to say Alma's lower value than FAMIR or Fort Smith? I think there's more research needed before you just make these decisions. Find out why, why, you know, makes sense? Am I making myself clear there?
Oh, you bet. Yeah, no, I appreciate you coming and sharing the thoughts on that. Any other specific items in these regulations that we're talking about now?
No, that's, no, I mean, is there anything I'm missing, Jacob, that I'm not touching on?
Nah, no, you're.
I mean, I'm probably touching on more than that.
Yeah, no, no, you're hitting on several things that are, that are new developments to, new additions, updated ones.
So I guess what I'm saying with that, with the additional cost to develop.
Yes.
You're not going to have additional appraisal values?
Well, I'm not an appraiser, but in my experience, certain things would not add to appraisal that would cost money in building.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. So that's what I'm saying. So I don't see the gain in the direction.
Yes.
I appreciate you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other?
You go ahead. Then I'll follow you.
Okay, okay. I'll try to be as quick as possible. I'm here like everybody else on these. This is an ordinance that is on the books currently in the city of Alma that was actually passed in 2015 by the previous administration that we have. And I want to refer to that, so I want to make sure everybody gets a copy of that. For the record, I'm the only reporter I've been to. Every meeting, I talk to you guys all the time about this. And I don't need to preach to you, but I'm going to today. This is the last sermon before I'm beginning here. Because you guys have liked to do some things and that are different than what you're proposing here or just as everyone else has mentioned here, you're going to kill growth in Alma. And I say that sincerely because this is my town, my hometown, and I'm not going anywhere. I'd love to do another development in Alma. But I can't do it with my hands tied behind my back and additional costs. Everything in this country, as all of you know, is going up. You can't even bid a custom home right now and hold your price because we get daily quotes on lumber, metal roofing to the roof. Everything is just out of filter right now and there's no sign of anything going back to normal. And inflation, we're just sitting back waiting on inflation to make things even worse. So I want to share with you four points and I want to get in the weeds on this. And if there's any extra ordinances, if anybody else would want one, there should be a few extras there if anybody else would care for one because I want to make sure everyone understands what I'm trying to point out. I want to hammer home four things. The first thing is if you'll turn to the proposed regulations and if you would go to page eight and nine on the proposed regulations, and I want to thank Rhonda for sending me those. I really appreciate you sending me the new proposed regulations. Most things in her are the same that we had talked about previously, but Jason and Erin have only been on the board a couple of meetings here. And I don't know that they heard everything that I talked about earlier at previous meetings. So I want to touch on these as briefly as I can, but make sure I get my point made. So section three, under chapter three, on page eight, beginning there talks about streets in Alma. I want to make sure you realize you have a conflict here. What this says is that you have, if you touch the city of Alma, you have to make a street match it. But if you've got the city of Alma, you've got a piece of property and you've got another piece of property, this piece of property, which is in the ETJ, only has to do county requirements. You are asking for a loophole right here. All I got to do is go put me a stretch of land right there and then do what I want over here and do it to county specifications. You guys don't even realize what you're doing and the can of worms are actually opening up here. And I wanted to keep my mouth shut on this and then I, my conscience got to me and I said, I need to make sure that I take this because that's what's going to happen, is you're pushing people out into the ETJ and this is what they're going to do is go do stuff to the, to the county specs on that. So this is something that needs to be addressed and looked at on, on that. And then moving to number two, which is the number two in the regulations, is the flood stage. And this is where I want to refer to the ordinance that I gave you. In your new proposed specs on page 17, partly down in paragraph four, which talks about this storm water drainage, it talks about the floor elevation of buildings constructed in the subdivisions shall be two feet above the base flood elevation as determined by FEMA. FEMA doesn't have a map everywhere. There's no need for them to have a map everywhere. Eagle Crest is a prime example. It's, it's up on a mountain. It doesn't need to have a FEMA map. It's not going to flood. In your ordinance that I gave you, if you will turn to page three at the very top, and I highlighted it for you, this is an existing ordinance that's been on the books for six years in Alma, which makes FEMA happy and makes ADQ happy. And this ordinance says that all lots adjacent to storm sewer or ditches or in low water areas shall have a minimum finished floor elevation two feet above the water level of the hundred year flood as determined by a professional engineer or as established as effective flood insurance rate map from, rate map as published by the National Flood Insurance. We discussed this last meeting and I thought you guys were going to take this out because this is on the books. There's no reason for it to be in here on this because this says in low areas on the books. What you're saying over here on your proposed regulation makes it mandatory. You're causing a flood study. You're, you're making a flood study be mandatory. I spoke to the city engineer Friday, Neil Morrison, and I asked him, he helped write what's on this page 17 of the regulations that are proposed. And he said, no, I was not consulted to write that at all. He said, everything you need is already in this ordinance that you already have. He also mentioned to me that the minimum, minimum cost to even submit a flood study to FEMA is $20,000 plus the engineering fees. And that's because FEMA farms it out, third party to the Baker engineers, and they are the ones that review this. And Jason Parker, I would mention to you with your new eight lot subdivision that you just did on Common Lane, that $20,000 minimum, for no reason, you're not going to flood there. But had you had to do that, that would have added an extra $2,500 to the eight lots that you developed plus the engineering fees. He said, I don't have any idea what the engineering fees would be. It would all depend on the size of the subdivision and the 20,000 is a minimum cost. It goes up the bigger the subdivision is on that. So there you go, right there, that's an example of the $2,500 more that would cost you per lot for no reason at all, other than we stated it the way we stated it in here. If you would leave it and just take this out and leave it the way that we have it in the existing ordinance where it talks about low areas, if you want to go build by the baseball fields, yeah, you might need a flood study. But there's no reason to make other people do it in other areas of the city. Or you got to remember, guys, this is the ETJ, one mile all around the city of Alma. What you do here affects that as well. So anybody outside the city that wants to do anything, they have to play by these rules or they should. So you're affecting not only growth in Alma, but growth one mile out of Alma that might potentially come into Alma at a later date. So that's on the two foot flood stage. And then I want to go to the maintenance entity. And that, in your proposed regulations, it's on page 22. And these kind of overlap. I want to talk about maintenance entity and I want to talk about detention points. On page 22, this has nine things underneath it. We talked about this last meeting on the maintenance entity. I thought that we got it worked out that we, we didn't need these in Alma. We don't want these in Alma. All it does is add another layer of cost. You've got bylaws, attorneys, you've got fees, you've got, you're just handicapping a builder wanting to do something by adding another layer of bureaucracy on it to have these entities involved. And then you go and you add another layer to it. I don't know where we picked up number four. They came out of nowhere from the last meeting while we added this. You said in number four, the maintenance entity shall issue a performance bond worth twice the amount of the estimated yearly upkeep in order to ensure landscaping will be fulfilled and continued. First of all, there's no such thing as a performance bond that can be done. That would be a maintenance bond. You're asking for a maintenance bond forever to make sure that someone's going to mow their yard and mow their subdivision entrance there? Marty Clark is here and Marty Clark is with Brown Hiller Clark. He's the president of Brown Hiller Clark in Fort Smith. And I called Marty and I asked him if this was even possible. And would this be an appropriate time for you to address this?
Yeah, sure.
I'd like for him to address this and tell you what you're adding here, you can't even do on that if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, so yeah, I'm Marty Clark and Emily sent me the language. So she was asking me whether or not that can actually be done, a bond can be done for that purpose. There's a couple of issues, there's a couple of problems. First question would be, what, who is the maintenance entity? So, you know, in a lot of cases, that could be a POA and we've already talked a little bit about POAs. And then the other would be, I guess it's just the developer probably would be who the entity is. But a performance bond, it's stated as a performance bond. A maintenance bond is actually a performance bond, but maintenance bonds cannot typically be written for more than one year so they can't be written in perpetuity. And the other thing is a performance bond has to, has to adhere to a contract. There's not actually a contract that would specify what the obligation is and what the cost is. So the bottom line, and I did talk to a guy named General Ruby, he's the head of Travelers Insurance Bond Division in Arkansas and has been for 30 years, just was inducted in the Arkansas Insurance Hall of Fame. He's a really smart guy. I said, here's the issue, this is what Alma, this is sort of some language they're proposing. He said, you know, honestly, that can't be done. You can't, assuredly can't time to issue a maintenance bond unless they've got 100% full collateral on it. Which means that the developer is going to have to put up money behind the maintenance bond. So the maintenance bond will be issued by Travelers or an equivalent insurance company. And the bond does what you need, guarantees you something. But in turn, the developer to get that bond is going to have to put up 100% collateral because they don't write a maintenance bond, not collateral laws, unless it's a really big contractor like, for example, Roche Coleman is a client of mine. They closed 4,000 homes last year. They built, we've got tons of POAs that we do for them, lots of maintenance bonds. They don't have to require collateral because they have such a structured bond program with their carrier. They're not having to put up separate collateral for each subdivision they develop. In this case, you would have to have that though. Because you've got small, less sophisticated developers without a track record for the surety covering like Roche Coleman has. So yes, it's going to be expensive. He said, if you were looking at an alternative, what you would require in the absence of a maintenance bond is that's really not going to be doable by a surety industry. What you'd be looking at is a ILOC, irrevocable letter of credit that would have to be posted by the developer. So that serves the same purpose. It's a, it's a letter of credit that they're putting up. You know, I don't know what the number would be because it says twice the amount of the annual maintenance. So I don't think annual maintenance is a typical, let's say it's 20 grand. If it's 20,000, well, let's say it's 10,000 a year, maybe 20,000, that's double that. So if it's 10,000, you're requiring a $20,000 bond. The equivalent of that would be an ILOC, irrevocable letter of credit, at 20 grand. But the problem with that is you have the bank issues it, there's a fee associated with that. It's not a big fee for 20 grand. But it's an impingement to their working capital on the balance sheet. So it's. So it's a negative from a working capital perspective when that developer or that builder has to go borrow money to develop homes. So it's a negative in that regard. So basically, what I'm saying is, this paragraph four is not really doable by a performance bond. There are such things as completion bonds, you know, like if you say, a, a developer goes into a subdivision, and there's a plat that's been approved by you guys, and you require a completion bond, that's completely doable. That's like, hey, we're, the developer, the builder's gonna have to build it to the specs. If they fail to do that, then Assurity County could get involved. The thing about that is, though, it's a definite period of term. It's also tied to a specific contract, with specific contract obligations. This sort of thing would not be tied to that kind of contract, so it's really not doable. Um, and then, we've already talked about POAs, I don't really wanna beat that up. That is, you know, we, like, for Roush Coleman, I probably write over 200 POAs, so at a certain point in time, the development gets to a certain level of development, where like, usually 80% of the lots are sold, then it gets turned over to the POA, and then we provide an insurance policy for the POA for liabilities, so they have to have a liability policy, so if somebody gets hurt on that common property, there's gonna be a claim, right, and they're gonna come after the POA, so you need a liability policy. So there has to be an insurance policy purchased. And usually where we see a POA is in places where there's real property to insure, like playground equipment, or fences or gates, or something like that. So we have real property plus liability, and that's what a POA's purpose typically is. I'm a member of a POA in Fort Smith at Riley Farm, you know, that's a huge subdivision, I think I pay 150 bucks a year, and, and they basically use that to take care of landscaping, or, or, you know, in the signs where they keep the flowers and the maintenance and stuff like that, but it's not, there's not really real property per se, uh, and they do do a good job of taking care of, of, of the flower beds and things like that. But, you know, I think in this case, the POA does have exposures when you create a POA, because number one, you gotta pay for the premium for the insurance policies, obviously you gotta pass through the cost to the members in the form of a POA. There's also lawsuit potential, too, because we've had two major lawsuits at Riley Farm, one of which had to do with somebody, um, somebody who installed an outdoor gym, an outdoor basketball court, and put these bright lights on that were shining into neighbors' yards, and then they sued, and then they, they, the POA got, took an action against them, and got countersued, and it was a really nasty scene. But there's a lot of litigation that can come from POAs as well. So if we're really looking just to try to figure out a way to, um, upkeep the premises and keep the front entry mode, or maybe, I understand there's been a problem with a detention bond here, I get that, maybe in a specific instance where you have a detention bond, that you do require some form of an ILOC, you know, an irrevocable letter of credit, but it's really not something that can be done in a bond format. I think that's really what I'm just here to speak. I have no dog in this, not at all, I'm just speaking from an insurance perspective, what can, can't be done. Okay, so, is there any other questions on any of that?
No.
Okay.
I could address that bond thing.
Sure.
That's, I addressed it with Sean, and, you know, he said that was sufficient, so.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Have you, anything else, or do you close?
I'm close.
Okay.
I've got one more, sorry. So, I would ask you guys on, uh, page 22 and 23 to just take up an entire section about the, the detention ponds and the maintenance entities. Uh, we, no one knows why we put this in here in the first place. What you're gonna end up in Alma is having subdivisions with no entrances and no pretty signage that looks good, because if you have to do this, why would you do that and create another bed for you? Unless you could do something like a Riley Farm and have hundreds and hundreds of lots to be able to do, that's not where we're at in Alma and what's gonna happen. And I pointed again to Mr. Parker, he was the latest, the latest subdivision that's been, uh, lots that have been planted in Alma, and there was no need for this to happen. I mean, what if you had to, with this on the regs, you would have to have done that for your eight lots that you just developed? I mean, imagine the cost, if it's the smaller addition that it is, it's just ridiculous, I think, to have that in there. And then moving to the detention ponds on that, I wanna refer you, uh, that's in the same section, and I would ask that you guys will take that out, but I would refer you to you what's on the books currently with Alma right now, and in the ordinance that I gave you on page 14, you need to, you need to look at this, and I highlighted it for you, and what this says about detention ponds in Alma, this was in 2015, "The short-term operation and maintenance of a public detention pond shall be the responsibility of the developer or the property owners association for a period of one year after the completion of construction." It talks about the maintenance item, so you've got a one year when you develop something with that. This is common, and this is what's done in every other city around us. Alma is the only one proposing to do something different, because they don't wanna mow anything in the future after that one year is over. Then it says in the long-term operation, it says upon completion of the short-term maintenance period, one year, "The entity with short-term maintenance responsibility shall provide a written request upon, that the city of Alma assume ownership and the responsibility for operation and maintenance of the detention pond. Within 30 days of the request, the city will conduct an inspection of the facility and will meet that responsibility, provided the following conditions have been met." There are three things there. "If the detention pond is found to be deficient, the city will notify the requestor and provide a list," this is a punch list, just like we do with houses, "at a one-year warranty on that, and then after those have been addressed, after the pond has been determined to be acceptable, the lot that the detention pond occupies shall be deeded, be simple, to the city of Alma, and the responsibility for ongoing operation and maintenance shall be assumed by the city of Alma." It's on the books, it's been there five years, why are we trying to change this? There's not another city around us that does this differently than this on here. And then I'll close and, and tell you two things. One is, this is yesterday's headline in the paper about Greenwood. 250 lot subdivision with four different builders that they're proposing, it was on the front page of the paper, and on the very top of it, it says, "The mayor said the city explorer is exploring ways to provide builders with incentives for building in Greenwood." Why are we not doing that in Alma? What we're doing now is we're, we're adding extra cost to a layer of development that should not be there, and I can promise you, people will not develop in Alma, they can't afford it, if you add these costs there for nothing. This is something that is for nothing. And just today, this morning, you don't even know this, I got a phone call from the mayor of Ozark begging me to come back to Ozark and build houses. We need builders, we'll do anything in the world you want if you'll come back to Ozark and build houses down here. We can go anywhere we want to build, we'd like to build in Alma and have more developments here, but we've got to have some help to be able to do it, and not add, added layers of bureaucracy that cost us money for no good reason. It's common sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on the public hearing for the subdivision regulations? Okay, we'll close those out at 12:37. And we will then open up the public hearing for the rezoning of Henry Street to R1, if you think. And Cody, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, just, uh, you know, the plans are gonna have to be reworked, because the inside townhouses, they need to be wider to fit the lot with, and so that was just a missed oversight on my part, but we can still proceed with the zoning changes, so. It's, but it's also gonna need, you know, it's gonna need a follow-up subdivision rules, because we'll be lot splitting, basically, so.
Yeah, just to be clear, everybody, we're, we're rezoning the parcel today, is what we're looking at doing, um, any future lot splits, development, replating, any of that will come at a later date, so. Okay. Does appear to be any comments on the, uh, public hearing for that? So we'll close that out at 12:39. And we will now call the board our regular October meeting. Everybody here except Mr. Valentine, and I appreciate everybody else being able to make it today. Um, first thing we have to do, Ron had told me earlier, is we have to take it out of office, or to be a planning commission, so, um, you may be better able to explain this to us.
You know, actually, Ron may have a little better explanation.
Okay.
I'm Sean, I'm a rental housing city clerk, and I've been in class for the last three weeks, and I have learned that all commissioners are supposed to be sworn into office and have it on file with the county. The, um, uh, attorney for the Arkansas Municipal League has sent me those statutes this afternoon, hopefully, so I can present that, but I think Ron may actually have some.
Well, I looked for statutes, didn't find any, so I'd ask Sean to provide me with something, because I know y'all probably asked. He has, um, uh, some opinions that, because it had come up in another city, um, that the Attorney General, um, had put out there, that it, it actually calls, um, for the members of the commission under, let's see, let me read it right here, so. Senators, it, it doesn't come down specifically to the commissioners for this, now when you get into the power 14, there are, um, absolute written for airports or water wastewater commissioners, things like that, didn't find anything in the planning, but it is under a constitution.
I did see something for local, local government, so I can get more specifics and provide it at the next one's meeting for you all.
Absolutely. But Sean didn't find anything, but he did send me this opinion that was written, if anyone wants to read that, print that off, so that, while it's not particularly required, it was their recommendation to go ahead and do it, to satisfy.
And we do this after meetings individually?
No, we can do it all here together, if you all want to. Now, there is, I think, did you put this in there, Patrick?
Yes.
They each have a book of all this.
We can all do it at the same time.
You can do it at the same time, and then, um, you'll need to stop by my office, because I'll need to stamp it and then leave it here with me. And there's a personal, like, your address that you would need on that.
Sure.
So what we can do, and, and then, it looks like Mr. Valentine's not here, so we'll have to make arrangements to, to do this. And so what we can do, if you guys will stand up and raise your right hand, I'm going to just repeat this, uh, this oath, and then, when I say, "I," state your name, don't say state your name, just say, "I," whatever, and I wanted to say, I'm happy to see faces with emails, I get emails, and so I was happy to put faces with those. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I," state your name.
Chris, my favorite.
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the State of Arkansas."
"Constitution of the State of Arkansas."
"And that I will faithfully, unto the best of my abilities."
"And I will faithfully, unto the best of my abilities."
"Discharge the duties as a commissioner of the Alma Planning Commission."
"Discharge the duties as the Alma Planning Commissioner."
You got it, you got it. Um, "And that I will not be interested directly or indirectly."
"And I will not be interested directly or indirectly."
"In any contract, in any contract led by the board."
"In any contract led by the board."
Congratulations, you're all commissioners. And if you wanna just stop by and bring this, then I'll get it signed for you in front of the calendar.
I have some blue pens if you don't have.
You should have had any blue pen for that.
All right, I'm gonna leave unless you all need some of your materials.
No.
I'm here to meet you as well. All right, bye-bye. Thank you.
Okay, next thing will be the approval of the minutes of the September meeting, which should be in the past, the question, your question, the motion for approval.
I, I just have one question, uh, in, in the last minutes, we asked, in fact, you asked, if we can take out the HOA and the tree canopy and visit those down the road, and then it has discussion afterwards, so, was that where we had discussed taking out the HOA altogether, the POA out of this?
Yeah, that's, that's just where you continue to talk about, those options.
I guess.
Well, I requested the audio from that and got that, and as I listened to it, I all agreed to the notes, and during that discussion, I thought it was determined, and the other one who was present had said we would pull that and push it down the road. Where are you exactly?
Uh, it's the last page, front side of the last page. After Mark and then Gaskin, and then...
Okay, yes, okay, nice, we're gonna go back here.
I just, that, to me, would stop a lot of HOA, POA discussion for now, if we could take it out, so I just didn't know.
Yeah, no, I agree, we kinda had left it, uh, we knew we weren't gonna vote on it in September, but we were gonna clean it up.
I can easily take it out, I thought, I, all I remember was, um, you know, taking out the tree canopy, for sure, and then I know Mark was having concerns about, you know, not having a POA, and so, that's where I left it up.
I definitely think this is something we can take out in...
I agree with Jason. I'm sorry, apologize.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, Chris, go ahead.
I think we can deal with this in, in literally a minute, when we get to that section, but I, I think we're all on the same page with that, of what we're thinking. Go ahead, Chris.
Two points. Uh, I agree with Jason, I thought we had agreed to table that in for, for later discussion, that was not gonna be part of what we were going to approve today. And I wanna go back to something, a point that I'm not sure who raised it in the beginning, one of our, um, one of the speakers here said that, uh, some verbiage had been added to the proposal from where we were last time, and I'm, I'm not aware if someone can be more specific as to what we have included, because from my understanding, we didn't make any additions to it, but that we had resolved to take out the POA, HOA discussion, uh, and the, uh, canopy.
Yes.
That had been resolved to be taken out.
There was addition, and it's minor, but it was touched on again today, on the flood, uh, the two-foot of a flood elevation, where it's...
I thought that was just understood from the basic ordinance, it was, so that whole streets and stormwater drains, that's all from Mark, and then there was already that issue where it's talking about, I guess it was the flooding part, um, and then I just switched it, you know, to the two-feet, BFEs, and that's basically what it is saying, uh, you know, it's just in conjunction with that ordinance, so.
Chris, where are you starting about, it's page 17 of the new regulations?
Thank you.
Um, on item four, I think, what was that, Cody, I don't have the...
Four of page 22, uh, 22, item four, maintenance entity, I think that was new, the bond.
Yeah, the bond.
It was, it wasn't?
Yeah, that was, that was just from, I thought it was Sean, and I thought we were...
We were on minutes, do I need to make changes to minutes?
Well, I think, I think where we're at, uh, guys, is, I think the minutes are correct, I think we're, we're, I think we need to, let's, let's approve the minutes, because I think we're in agreement of where we're at, and we need to open up discussion on the new subdivision regulation changes, which the minutes were hard to, and I think we're on the same page of where we're going with that, so, um...
Yeah, I apologize.
No.
I think the minutes weren't real specific in that, so, do we approve them or not approve them, or not?
I can still play the, the dome courage, without doing the...
No, I, I think you're on point, uh, let, let's do this, let's, any other questions, concerns, discussion on the minutes? If that's the case, if there are none, I would take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and then, uh, all in favor with a right-hand vote? Okay, that carries. Now, let's open up whole business for discussion of the subdivision regulation changes.
Guys, appreciate you listening, appreciate your work.
Jim, thank you very much.
Respect, glasses, to the city members.
Great, Jim.
Okay, so, where we're at is, we've had a informative public hearing, a lot of people here, and I appreciate them coming. I think with what Jason and Chris and Stephen have all mentioned here, we've got the maintenance entity section as a whole, um, as something to revisit later, to take, to pull out and revisit later, and then when we have added in the stormwater drain section, just a little bit of language there, may not be sufficient, and then, as Stephen said, on page 22, the maintenance entity calling. Now, that would be something that if the private infrastructure maintenance went away, that would go away with it, um, completely. So really, just, uh, kind of, two and a half items here to open it up. Um, I guess let's start with the private infrastructure maintenance, I'm kinda the opinion as well as, as Jason was, that it was not gonna be in the final draft completely. Um, we've obviously heard from several people today in the public hearing about it, so, as it's written here, I believe, we could, we can move to extract that from this.
So remove basically the private infrastructure maintenance and the private infrastructure landscaping?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I was about to say, that's probably just my fault, because I just, all I remember is, you know, Mark saying, you have... is, you know, Mark saying, you have his issue, you know, with taking care of that stuff, and so, I don't, I don't remember, you know, saying remove that part, so that's, that's my fault.
So where we're talking there is section seven, private infrastructure maintenance, and section five, which was also discussed with that at last meeting, the infrastructure and landscaping requirements. We did cover prohibited species, and that was cleaned up, Stephen had a good, a good point there, where he couldn't, in black and white print, he couldn't turn the words with, so, prohibited species are fine, I think we all agreed that was not, not a bad thing at all, so, section five and section seven, I mean, we should strike those out completely.
Strike, I think that's what we said to do last meeting.
Yeah, I think so, so let's mark those out completely, section five and section seven from it, and then moving on to what Chris mentioned regarding the stormwater drainage section, this ordinance that was given to us is twenty-five, twenty fifteen dash six, where it states the stuff about detention ponds, and then also the, all lots of places to storm sewer ditches or in low areas shall have a minimum ten or four elevation, five feet above the water level, it would seem to me, since we've got this ordinance on the books, that if we struck number four out completely, it'd just be overlap to what this much larger minimum storm drainage ordinance is.
If, if I may, if I remember our last discussion, we said, follow common sense here, if it's a question of being above the flood stage, then we don't have to do it, if it's something that's in the flood stage, it needs to be done for that given area, but it's, it's not inclusive for every property in the entire planning commission period.
And this is, yeah, this is where it's saying that adjacent storm sewer ditches are in lower areas, in the ordinance, that's there, so yeah, I would agree with you, if we've got that, and that's a better definition, plus there's so much other stuff in it, that would also cover the detention ponds.
I would think if you're trying to build a subdivision in a flood zone area, before you can get bonded or get any insurance on it at all, you're gonna have to get that done anyway.
Most likely, yes, we're just avoiding the Eagle Crest development that has to go through the process and the expense, or like, like Callaway there, where he had his.
Right.
That's significant money on small development that day, so, with that, yeah, I think if we struck four, we've already got it covered in, I mean, basically similar language there.
Yeah, that whole, I think the required improvement, that whole part was from Mark, that was like, I think, when I first started, it said, highlights that, get information from Mark.
Yes, that's correct, that's some of their stuff.
Mark, God, they had that.
Okay.
Any other items, questions, concerns, if we believe we can vote on this with our edits?
Yeah, I think that'll be super easy to fix.
Yeah, since we're not changing language or anything, is this something we can vote on today?
I would say, yes, we've had our public hearing, public hearing, so.
Is, have we addressed our bond issue in point four, that subsection point four, that?
Page twenty-two.
Yeah, that's the next.
Striking that whole section.
Yeah, section, section eighteen and section seven is being struck completely, so it died with it.
Okay, right.
That was interesting information, well, I knew that was, that was so intense to go with. So where we stand right now, I'm gonna write this down, is we're looking at the latest subdivision and land development regulations, and we were going to strike section four item four, stormwater drainage.
Were we striking the whole thing, or just that one?
Just that stormwater drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's still stuff about streets and.
Yeah, okay, and I believe that was all original in the existing eighty-nine six ordinance, but where it talks about.
Master street plan and.
And sewer sizes and things like that, so section four item four, which is the stormwater drainage. And then, section five and section seven as well. Just private infrastructure landscaping and private infrastructure maintenance.
Those are the items, basically.
So basically, you have section six, which is prohibited species of a little bit, and if you can count.
Section five.
Yeah, section five, and then, and you take that on out and rework the numbers, should be good, so, we're right there on what we're at, taking those three out.
Make sure of it, so, page seventeen, number four.
We're only pulling out the language for the flood, right?
Yes, the, take the entire section. I think the entire section.
I don't think that's what you're saying. Because there's other stuff in here.
That's others.
Not just the.
That needs to be included.
Not just the two feet above base flood elevation, I think we're just pulling out that, that is in the other ordinance, right?
Man, yeah, I can, I can do just that line, I mean, I think that would be fine, because I mean, it kind of redundant, but it just at least lets the builder know, hey, like, you know, we're better than flood line.
Just twenty fifteen.
Yeah, because this talks about all kinds of storm drainage, I mean, the floor elevations of buildings, that was just one section, that's the section you got.
Yes.
I think we're just trying to pull that other line, so that's what I, make these happen.
Okay.
Okay, so just that line?
Yeah, the floor elevations of buildings constructed in a subdivision, should we repeat above the base flood elevation, term about give or return from a rainfall frequency, with a return here of a hundred years, I think that was what, and show us, then the other ordinance said, it's just redundant for us having the rest of this, though, I think, I would like to see stated.
Agreed, sorry.
No, because it's either storm underground or above ground facilities, and that, no, okay.
Well, Mike, if I may, I want to thank Mr. Rucker for providing us this information, that is very useful, just a thank you, on page three, the documents that she provided for us there, from the City of Alma, minimum storm drainage standards, top of page three, section B, which she highlighted for us, it gives the existing ordinance for what that, what that is, if we want to say, see this reference to this document, I think it spells it out, what we want to do there, that way, we're not, I think we're just validating or just saying, in fact, I don't even know if we need to add it in there, because it's stated right here, it's already approved by the City of Alma.
Yeah, the last page, it's at least tabled as.
I don't, I don't know that we have to add that in there, but I'm just saying, we've already stated it's what it is, so there's, I don't know if we need to be redundant, or whether we just need to leave it alone, and.
I think, it's just up to you guys, I'm fine with taking it out, or, you know, at least just referencing, just whichever you guys prefer.
This says discharge and everything, the ordinance covers all that already, really.
So we're saying for that section, how does it reference this ordinance rather than having that section?
And is everything included in that ordinance, Mark, I don't, I haven't had time to read through what anybody brought aside, or everything, but I don't care too.
Yeah.
I'll make sure you're around that.
Yeah.
It's very exciting, but. There seems to be a lot of detail in here outside of got through to make sure we cover everything, but if it's all covered, I'd see no issue with just referencing this ordinance.
So will we state that, Chris, I think I understand what you're saying, say something along the lines of floor elevations of buildings will be in accordance with ordinance twenty fifteen dash six, or do we even need to?
If we can.
Or stormwater drainage?
Say stormwater, yeah, because if you say floor elevation, you're.
Yeah.
That I love a bit of that, where this talks about the low areas, I want to make sure you got that.
If the developer comes in here asking for ordinances, can we give them this and overfit that?
Yeah, sometimes, you know, if it's, you know, a good development, you know, in a floodplain area, you know, you have to follow our ordinance, here's our ordinance, and, you know, try to highlight some of them, or, you know, at least give them the bits that they need to know, but, I mean, had a whole week of that training, and I'm still, you know, new to that whole process, I'm still waiting on, you know, school districts, floodplain stuff, so.
I think it reads better that the progress reference, so that in case someone misses it, they can refer to.
Right.
So it's just storm drainage, take that section out, I don't think I sound lost here, but I kind of want to make sure, the, shoot, does the entire section four say reference the ordinance, or just take that section out, and somewhere at the bottom just say storm drainage reference ordinance twenty fifteen dash six?
Has there been anything else that you've seen in this twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen ordinance that, that we're changing in this new proposal, is there anything else besides the, the two foot, that just doesn't say low lining areas?
This says, the ordinance says it all.
Right.
From what I, from my studies, it says it all.
Okay, even the rest of that whole number four paragraph?
Yes, I would take the whole thing out, if it were me.
Well, and as I look at this here, where it talks about curving gutter streets, and drainage channels and carrying that, it's, I'm not gonna say it's the exact same thing, but it's very similar, I don't see any overlap, the regulations we're looking at passing don't have any numbers in them as far as pipe sizes in that section, section four, so if we reference stormwater drainage to section twenty fifteen dash six, I don't think we're doing anything, the hogging it in there at all.
At all, so basically just put that as, remove all that text, and then just say, you know, reference twenty fifteen dash six for, yeah, stormwater concerns or.
Yeah.
You know.
Remove the storm drainage standards. Yes.
This ordinance made ADEQ happy and FEMA happy, it made everybody happy at the time and in compliance with what needed to be said and done, it was pretty comprehensive, this entire ordinance.
Yeah, it says further down the page that system discharge, it's talking about two years form, which is what this is referencing, so yeah, it should be, should be just fine, and just reference twenty fifteen dash six on that. Okay, any other questions? So that would be twenty fifteen dash six, and then section five, item five and seven, which is the private infrastructure landscaping and the private infrastructure maintenance, checking that out. Thank you for that. We've done the public hearing, we've had the, we've had, you know, plenty of comments, we have listened, and we have made adjustments to that, so with that, I would take a motion to approve them with the three changes we've just drafted to.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor with a right hand vote? Okay, that carries, thank you guys very much for the work, Cody.
Now, when I'll make those changes and send it to you guys, and make sure you guys are good with it before I send it to the city council.
They just, we're referring it now to the, the city council. Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
Cody, it's not listed under new business, but we do want to look at resulting.
I was about to say, it should be, I'm not, I was about to say, you see, we have the public hearing.
Before we go there, can I change hats for a second, because I know it's gonna come up in the city council meeting, one of the reasons that we're looking at this is because there have been some, some just issues with the detention pause, the entrance system, or subdivisions and stuff like that, we feel like this addresses those things, or do we need to make sure that when this goes to the city council, that we know that the decision was made, go ahead and get the stuff out that, you know, needs to happen now, and then things like the HOA, POA, the maintenance, all of that stuff, it's gonna be something discussed and eliminated, because it's gonna come up, it's gonna be asked, because there is, it's asked about already, so with the passage of this, that's, that's gonna be one of the first things that I think will probably be, be brought up, how do we need to make sure that we present and address that?
Did you listen to the entire meeting?
Okay. I know Mayor Mark has some concerns as well, and it's some of the concerns that have come to.
Yeah.
City Council and, and to him.
Where we left it, it's kind of, just like what you said, is we, we were ninety percent there with everything, we just wanted to, those sections were, we couldn't come to, and we've heard today, you know, in the public hearing, that it's not a popular thing, so, but that being said, when we move this on and off our desk, certainly something we could take up.
Well, I, I would say I agree, it's not a popular thing, I'm not a developer, I, I would be on the other side of that as a home buyer, and so if I pull into a subdivision, like if I pulled into Eagle Crest, where I live, and it was grown up like it was, what if we didn't have anybody maintain all of that, you know, that would have been a concern for me, because out the gate, wouldn't matter how pretty the house was, I would have, I would have probably turned around and left, so, I want to make sure that we do address those things, from, from my side, I understand that a POA, HLA, and that would be the way to go, but we do need to address, hey, there needs to be something for the maintenance there, because if it gets grown up, you know, like what Eagle Crest did, while Eagle Crest was shut down, city couldn't do anything about it unless they wanted to put city personnel out there, and wasn't their responsibility, who are they gonna rock the ticket to, who are they gonna talk to, you know, there was no, there was no entity or anybody in place to take care of that, so, I'm concerned with future developments getting maybe to that point, if there isn't something in place, I don't think we have anything currently that really pushes, hey, we have to have that right now, but we do need to keep that in front of us, and make sure that when it, when this does go to the city council, if Mayor Mark is gonna probably bring up those concerns there as well, we need to have some kind of answer, you know, this is kind of our goal for addressing that, we're looking at, you know, if we're looking at other cities, and how they handle smaller subdivisions and stuff like that, if we're getting more information from, from people like you, Drucker, for, for how, you know, a developer would, would propose that we handle that, you know, I think those are good answers, just to make sure we're showing those answers.
One thing that makes me, and you would have heard it last month, the subdivision regulations kind of an exception to a lot of stuff, is the implication of the ETJ in it.
Right.
And that's where things outside of the city could be getting almost a mile out, the POA requirements, landscape, things like that, I think is a lot of the concern here, where, versus something already in the city, there's gotta be a way we can come up with, I would agree, that something could be done.
But if, but if I wanted to go out here currently, let's say I'm a developer, and I'm not, so I have no idea how that world works, and I come out here, I, I build a subdivision, and I make this nice beautiful entrance, I sell eighty percent of my lots, I beat everything back over the city, now what, you know, we just let it grow up, I mean, the, the entrance and all of the common areas and stuff like that, doesn't, I guess necessarily belong to the city, that belongs to somebody as part of that subdivision, but, somebody's gonna be on the maintaining, and that's, that's still gonna be an issue, in my opinion, or a possibility, I guess, with what we've passed, so we need to make sure that, that comes up, that we've got something up the most, or something in the works, or handling something like that.
I think it's something we all do, do look at and come up with, right?
And I, I don't think it should just necessarily be the responsibility of the developer either, I think that there needs to be something in place that, hey, if this is gonna happen, if you're gonna put this kind of an entrance, or this kind of landscaping, or whatever, then it's a requirement that you have some way of maintaining that, or, or, you know, whatever development, but you also want to grasp, and just not do it that way, have somebody to keep it clean, so, yeah.
And that's, I've seen that just through the experience of building developments with a gigantic entrance, and they kind of work themselves out where they, maybe do have a POA because it's behind a gate, or it's a very high end, like you talked about Riley Farm, there was something, or something like that, where it sort of funds itself and works, because the people that live there can afford it, and want it. Similar to your, your, where I built a plenty of developments in the city of Alma, where the entrance is very minimal, it's, it's more or less just a basic, you know, block, column, or a statue, or a little thing in a front yard, that, when the people move over and they're mowing, in any way, they mow around it, and it sort of takes care of itself, and that's something where POA in that neighborhood.
It would work.
It's not anything, yeah, because he's exactly around, I know exactly what it means when he says people will just say, build me and do it, and when I sell it someday, I'll, the lien I've been taking care of, you may.
I mean, I, I, I think that, you know, most of us in here probably would handle it that way, so, oh, whatever, you know, forgotten all they are, just say, good deal, I'll deal with it later, you know, like, no, no big deal there, but, I just want to make sure that we are keeping those things, because that's where this came from, from the city council, from the mayor, was that there are instances in town where there have been some issues, so, that was brought up, and we were trying to address that, didn't get to a good answer, but we want to get to a good answer.
I would agree with you, yeah, something we gotta.
Let's approve this as is.
Yes, agree. Yes, I agree.
Minutes table, that section say, this will still be on the minutes for future session?
Yeah, I would, I would say we go ahead and move forward, like, like what, with the changes that we've, we've listed, um, and put, put in the minutes, that's, that's the only thing that I was asking for.
And it may be as simple as something, based on subdivision size, or lot size, or entrance, or whatever, applying in the city limits as an ordinance, a whole lot easier than something that's gonna plot a mile out as a blanket.
Absolutely, I mean.
But that may be the way to solve.
If you're doing a, uh, an eight-home, um, you know, subdivision, there's no sense in it.
Yes.
If you're doing, you know, what we have a hundred homes or whatever, Eagle Crest, that's a little different, you know, yeah.
So changing the verbiage to the word may require, instead of shall require, changes everything on that.
Well, if, again, I go back, my big hangup was the E T J stuff, cuz you got so many people driving through stuff in the county. You can do it in pride, uh, county regulations, um, and for the city as well, but.
Well, we don't wanna drop them to the county, that was a good point that, that you mentioned, what we both made, we don't wanna drop them out of here.
And we're so close to the Ruby, Dire, Kimber, E T J, that it doesn't take much, just pull, let's drive them, five hundred and fifty, by the way, to the development. That's what we is, exactly. So, I know Chris is gonna go here, uh, I guess. We've got new business, we've got the letter here that Cody sent out, for what we're looking at doing is, everybody has seen, seen this, um, Mr. Gage was here last month with his plans, and as, as Cody mentioned, there are, uh, quite a bit of things to be touched up and redone, plan-wise, but all we're looking to do it today is rezonate property, which the city currently owns, from an R two to an R one B, which is the townhome, uh, designation, so in my opinion, we're zoning down in, in the level, which is a good thing, um, to allow for this. To, to allow for this project, and, uh, yeah, any other comments to go with that?
No, I'm, I'd say I'm supportive with the zoning change, anytime you're, you know, doing that kind of zoning change, you know, I'm for that.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
This is something in that area that was discussed at city council, that if, even if this project was being proposed, it would probably be a good idea to go ahead and move forward with the zoning change anyway, um, just because of where the property is at and how it sits, so.
Most of, you know, downtown Alma is, you know, R two, so, you know, I mean, you want a bunch duplexes, fourplexes, or, you know, maybe some townhouses over here, you know, I don't know. Who else wants to change their property, but, you know, at least this kinda gets the ball rolling.
Well, that, that property, though, was kind of long in the era, too, I mean, there's not really a whole lot that could be done real well with it, other than something like this, so, I think everybody was in agreement there, though, this, this is probably a good.
Yeah, going down, so. Any questions, discussion, if not, take a question.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Has anybody been asked about, any public comment, or anybody's, has anybody been contacted by anybody in the area about that, before we went there?
The rezon?
Yeah.
I have not.
I have, uh, the, I guess the neighbors to the north, I guess his son came into my office and was kinda complaining about it.
To the north?
Yes, uh, Neil Moon, his son came in and was, had concerns about it, and.
How would you have, I'm sorry, to the north, that would be between the property and the, what was, where was the other one?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's, there's a house there.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, uh, yeah, it's.
I didn't realize there was a house there.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, you're fine, I don't, so, you know, he just had some concerns about the zoning change, and I figured he'd be at the meeting, but, he's not here, so.
Okay. What were his concerns?
Uh, he just didn't think we were doing things right, basically, and he didn't think, I don't think he understood our zoning regulations, cuz he said that we were, changing it to a different zone, but R one B is obviously for townhouses, but he was thinking that R two was townhouses, and I don't think he was. I showed on, you know, the zoning regulations, I told him, you know, we had public notice, we put in the paper, and all this other stuff. I mean, done our process, and, of course, it's a city of Alma doing, you know, the zoning change, so of course, we can change the zone of our own property as long as we follow the process. And that has to be an issue at the council, and of course, that was done by the council last month, so.
Okay, uh, we'll take a motion, if one is somebody.
I make a motion, we change the zoning as requested.
Okay. Okay, have a motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I carries. Um, I don't have any other announcements, Cody, you have anything to add?
No, uh, I'd say it's funny that you're talking about, you know, uh, subdivision and everything, cuz I was contacted, I think, yesterday, uh, you know, somebody wants to buy this property, like, just outside the city limits and do a subdivision, I don't know how big or anything, but they're inquiring about, you know, regulations, and of course, I was like, well, here's this subdivision, but we're clearly about to update it, so, you know. I gave them the draft of what I did have, and then, of course, you know, that's gonna change, you know, afternoon, when I get done with that, it's.
Okay.
Great, I'll raise a question, will you make sure that you share those edits with that developer, though, just to make sure, just say, hey, you know, we've had these adjustments.
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question? And to me, I appreciate that Jim brought this, I mean, as far as the population not increasing, and then only basically, and really lack of subdivisions. From your standpoint as a builder, what, I mean, the, what we have on the books isn't limiting it for the last forty years, what is limiting growth in Alma at the moment, from your perspective?
Problem is cost, the problem is, is, the way I see it, is, is the cost factor of infrastructure is so expensive right now, and then the absorb, excuse me, the absorption rate of Alma is slow, and you can't pay for the infrastructure costs and the entrance and come up with lots that are affordable, there is no such thing as affordable housing now. Everything, we got a call yesterday, all plumbing, fixtures, uh, faucets, everything went up twenty-five percent yesterday, and you can't get them. You can't get the products that you need to complete a house right now, and there's no end in sight to what things are gonna cost in the future, and it's very worrisome. So a builder is really concerned, do I stick my neck out here and pile my funds up and, and dirt, and then I can't build a house that's affordable, that I can sell? I mean, that's the way I see it, um, you know, Mr. Pervin see it differently in Chappan, I don't know, but that's my contingent from it.
I, I agree, I mean, we've, we've lost our rear on pretty much everything we've done, because we started in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Pandemic is kind of a hard time to judge anything about housing market versus how many people move to a town and nobody's allowed to leave their house for a year, of course, nobody moved to town, you know, so, I, I think it's a bad example of those past three years to show, but, yes, it's, it's been.
Well, our current regulations have been around for longer than I have, so, you know, judging that along the last three, four years.
I, I, I was unhappy personally with the way the regulations read in a certain few areas, I believe all that has been fixed in this, and it was a few little things, but, it did change a lot for me, and some of these new things that we were proposing to begin with would've changed it even more, and like I said, I've already, I've already got lots that are twenty-six thousand dollars after I developed it, I can't add another two grand, cuz, yeah, just, we're just older than twenty-six, as it is.
Eighty-one ten percent almost, and.
I was just.
You forgot that you are.
And that's just it for nothing, because it's just a FEMA cost, you know, just to, to check a statute, and it's like selling a house on a, a HUD, they're, they just want you to spend all this money, go all these, jump through these hoops to just check the box, check the box, check the box. And it, if it made it more meaningful or, or better, that's different, but if it doesn't, you're just checking the box, that's half of what we spend money on.
I would add real quick to what, what you would ask is, it's not just Alma, um, we're building, building out now subdivision we're a part of, which are the doors in danger, and that was, planted and opened up in two thousand and eight, and it's, it was over a hundred lots, um, but we're down to like the last three, four lots there available, um, for everybody. Whereas Fort Smith is more of the higher-end, three hundred thousand plus homes, and it, of course, the land is higher there, but the, the price you're getting is higher, but the absorption rate there is so much faster, um, I mean, they're, they're doing smaller developments over there, um, over fourteen lots, in phases, so you'll end up having, you know, close to a hundred when it's all said and done, but.
They're getting ninety-five thousand dollars for a lot.
Just based on location, it's, it's, you could walk A B F, if you work there, you know, something like that, where I saw this as a big improvement, and especially today for the Vogue, where Alma has kind of filled the niche, and has been good for us and for a lot of other people, is the more estate-sized development out in the county, which it may not be in Alma city limits, but it's benefiting, they're still going to be Alma law, or buy gas here, school system, things like that, and that's where we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the throat, uh, if somebody wants to go buy forty acres and make, forty nice lots out of it, you've gotta build something nice on those to make your money, but, um, those are the places that don't need a P O A or a, a big entrance, cuz it just doesn't suck the. So, uh, no, with that, uh, anybody have anything else? I take a motion to adjourn? So move. Go to the second. Second, all in favor? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very, very much, for your attentive work.
Thank you.
It's not, you don't even want to show up to.
Oh, yeah.
Jesus, it's hard for her, she was like, first thought was, we're good for her.
Well, that's why I asked, I don't wanna, I'm sure anybody playing about it, but, yeah, the R P N B also didn't show up, so. Has no interest.
Yeah, I was, thank you, there's a lot going on already. H O A. River Pole for all those. Two, three, four, five. I just don't remember the H O A, I just remember, Mark, I just, I don't feel like there's a concession there.
If it's got an entrance.
But, yeah, I'm, I would much rather deal with that separately.
Thank you so much.
Maybe if that's, there was a lot of times, you could get that.
Okay.
Well, you shouldn't.
I didn't accomplish, uh.
There's other ways to.
Somewhere.
Property, space, aside. Going to the expense of it.
I have any ways.
I want you to take the effort, just, well, we're looking at it, I can see what, what options for that. There's an impasse here, it's gotta be branched, it's our job.
Well, a question we have, I never had to ask anybody, how would I ask it is, what started off, I mean.